Welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting. We're happy to have you. Let's get started. City Clerk?
This is the roll call for the City Council. Councilmember, Authority Member Johnson?
Present.
Mann?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Crist?
Present.
Mayor Chair Perez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
So we'll call the Housing Authority meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Housing Authority roll call. Authority Member Harvey? Mann?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Crist?
Present.
Chair Uzello? We have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, the invocation tonight will be by Pastor Tim Stroup from Crosswind Community Church.
And just quickly before I pray, just from the Low Tree House Kids Community House, they wanted to say thank you to the city and especially to Mayor Perez for opening the community houses and as even they prayed this afternoon, thank you God for this house. So just wanted to share that with you. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you today at the end of this beautiful day that we're able to come into this place, to a place of meaning in the city of Lancaster and invite your presence and your guidance in all the affairs that are taken on, the decisions that are made. We pray for your guidance that wise choices and good decisions according to your word will be made and for the good of the neighbors and the citizens of this town. I thank you, Lord, for the leadership of this city and pray it continue to bless them and guide them. I pray for health over their physical bodies and blessings upon their families. We thank you for that tonight for hearing our prayer and your presence here. In Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
Thank you. Vice Mayor? We have some special guests, our youth in government. They're going to do the pledge for us. Welcome.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its essence, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. He built my first house. No, I got another one. I got two now. Anyway, we're honoring Greg tonight because, let me tell you the story. One day, I get lost. I do that a lot. And so I go to the sheriff's station to find out where I'm going because I didn't have any money. I left my wallet at home. I do that a lot, too. So I go over to the sheriff's station and say, can I use the phone? And I'm the mayor, so they say, sure, you can use the phone. And they take me into the dispatch center. And all of a sudden, I'm seeing how sausage is being made. We had a 1970 dispatch center, and this is 2014. And it's the dispatch center that mobilizes resources, makes decisions as to what resources go where. They are the brains of the department. And we were antiquated. And the county said, too bad. So we went to Greg.
Well, actually, I got my arm twisted by these Robert Neal and Mark heavy and I headlocked myself.
Well, you did build Lancaster Boulevard. But anyway, for whatever reason, he totally redid it. And we now have a state-of-the-art 2014 dispatch center because Greg stepped up and made it so it could happen in a way that we didn't have to pay too much.
Yeah, a penny.
We didn't pay anything?
Well, maybe some, I don't know.
That's almost illegal.
No. Called donations.
But that is unbelievable. It makes a huge difference. It makes people safer. It makes us able to get resources that fast where they need to go on time. Thank you very much. Mr. Haynes, could we get a picture with the captain? So?
Oh, good idea. The captain's here? Where were you today?
Oh, never mind. Come on.
Greg, come on back out. Supporting from the floor.
You know, when he built my house, this is a true story. He gave me $40,000 back because he was able to bring it in under budget that much. Trust me, you young people, contractors don't do that. That 40 grand goes to their bank account, not yours. I was absolutely blown away. He's one of the most honest people I know. And I've enjoyed doing business with you now for 30 years. And when people say, how do you get the good jobs? He does things like the sheriff's station. He always steps up. Thank you. Okay, now, my favorite part of the day. You were my second favorite part of the day. This is my favorite part of the day. This is the SOAR High School Student of the Month, Caesar Truhy.
Did I pronounce it right? Come on down, Caesar. Now, just to be in SOAR is a huge thing. Every one of these kids that graduate from SOAR go to college, they all graduate with one or two years of college already behind them. They are doing things over in that school that is absolutely unbelievable. I mean, they're doing things like recombinant DNA and making bacteria, make insulin. I mean, when they're 14 and 15, the SOAR is, it soars beyond belief. And he is the student of the month from SOAR. So he's above that, right? And you're going to bring your parents down in a minute because they should be really proud of you. He had perfect attendance in the ninth, 10th, and 11th grades. He's won academic achievement awards in the ninth, 10th, and 11th. I take it you're a senior?
Yes.
Okay, great. He's 2013 Quest Bridge College Prep Scholar. He's on the Junior Honor Guard. He's the Rocketry Club President, Robotics Member, National Honor Society 2012 to the present, I-Club Member 2010 to the present, UCLA Henry somebody's name School of Education and Applied Sciences for the Summer of 2013. That's a program you've got to apply to get into. That's right. He wants to be an aerospace engineer. Caesar has committed himself to pursuing a degree in aerospace engineering. He is well on his way. He participated in the UCLA 2013 High School Summer Research Program where he had a chance to sharpen his skills and conduct research with hopes of developing a fuel-efficient airplane engine. I have an airplane. That would be really nice. It just sucks the gas. Caesar enjoys sharing what he has learned with other students and will continue to do so when he attends Columbia University in the fall of 2014. You have to be incredibly proud. Come on down. Let's get a picture. Let's get a picture of you guys. I mean, we know who really did the work, okay? We're parents. We just didn't do quite as good of a job.
Why are you giving me answers? Michael can't do it.
Good. Well, wait a minute. The best part, you get a $1,000 scholarship. Rex?
What?
Oh, that's right. We do have the principal of SOAR here. Chris, where are you? This is Chris Grado, who is responsible for the one, the school that is the top 1% of the nation, top eight of the state, four of the county, better than, like I love to say, Harvard, Westlake, and Buckley, where you pay $50,000 a year to attend. Congratulations, Mr. Grado. Okay. Sandra Johnson has the next presentation to make.
Well, you know, since we are honoring our children of our community, this is another opportunity for us to do the same. And we all know that children are our future in our community. And one of the things that we're very, very proud of here as a city is that we support certain groups and organizations that are there for our children. And one of the organizations that J.D. Kennedy called me one day and really honored me to be able to see the Boys and Girls Club. And we had a really amazing time. He showed me around. But one of the things that really amazed us is this young lady. This young lady is an example of what the Boys and Girls Club does for our children. And we're really honored to be able to recognize her today. And J.D., if you can come up and just say a little bit about her. And Kathy, if you could please come up. Kathy's going to speak a little bit about her journey, and we really need to hear it because it reminds us of why we do what we do in this community, why the council works together so hard as a team to make magic happen in this community, and it's because of our children.
Mayor, councilmembers, thanks for having us. And Sandra, thanks for coming out and visiting the Lancaster Boys and Girls Club. There's many things that the city actually does in partnership with the club that makes us able to provide the resources and benefits to our youth that we're able to. And I could go into it and tell you, but we've got an amazing Youth of the Year from 2013, Kathy here. We want her to be able to tell you what the club's done for her.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Kathy Nozil. The Boys and Girls Club means a lot to me. I've been a member since the age of six. I am now 17. The Boys and Girls Club is like my second home, you know. I didn't really get the motivation at home, so just going to the club, just being a regular kid every day after school, I just go and, you know, do my homework. They gave me the motivation to see like, to see myself worth and just to know that I can be somebody, you know? And I never had that. And my mom, she had seven kids, single mother. And so I understood, she's a great mother, and I understood, like, she had other, like kids to take care of and including myself. So going to the club, they gave me the motivation. And I'm a junior now in Allen Valley High School, and I'm a straight AMV student. And I'm excited to know that I'm going to be a senior in a couple of months, and I'm excited about college and just know that I can make it in life and I don't have to go through the struggle and actually do something for myself and other people. And now I love to give back to the community and the Boys and Girls Club and just to give the kids that something I didn't get, which was motivation, and just see them smile and just going in there and just making them happy and just being a role model to them.
Kathy, she's being a little humble. She volunteers at the Boys and Girls Club and now gives back what she's been given by the Boys and Girls Club. But again, this is a small example of what us, the community, represents, and that's our future, our children. And we as a city are very honored to be able to donate the building that we do to the Boys and Girls Club. And we will all, as a community, continue giving as we do. And this is why we do. SOAR High School's a great example, Boys and Girls Club's another example, and the list can go on. Let's be proud of who we are, and let's continue giving in any way. Even just being there for someone and saying hello makes a difference. So we'd like to acknowledge you as a city. So let's give her a big round of applause. Thank you very much.
J.D., you want to give us an update on the airshow?
Airshow, fundraising's been going well. We've been working with the city, finalizing the parking contracts, the work that the city's been able to do in partnership with the National Guard. Looks like our parking problem has been solved. So thank you very much for that. The city staff's been working very diligently there. Other than that, March 21st, 22nd, I'm sorry, yes, 21st, 22nd, and the 21st of the evening at Jet Hawk Stadium, we've got a great fundraiser for Flight Test Historical Foundation in the works. It's going to be a concert, fireworks. We've got a parachute drop coming in. We're finalizing the details on that this afternoon, actually. So we're looking very forward to having that. And we're actually about to start planning year two in just a couple of weeks, so very excited.
Terrific. Thank you. City Manager, any agenda items to be removed? No, sir. Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second on the adopting the amendments? Some of them?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Hearing none. Any consent calendar items to be removed?
I'll move we approve that consent calendar is currently comprised, removing CC2.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, CC?
We have to announce it. Motion passes.
Oh, really? You have to announce it?
Yeah, we now have to announce it. It passed unanimously.
Passed unanimously, okay. CC2, we have a speaker card, Michael Reeves.
Mayor, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen, I want to speak on CC2 and also CC5, if you don't mind. CC2 is the check register for the city to pay our bills. And, you know, I've discussed this so many times, I know you're tired of hearing about it. But I'm disturbed that we have a copier lease of $19,121. Releasing copiers. And, you know, I thought about this, is it really necessary for us to spend $20,000 for copiers? Do we have to make all these copies? Can't we scan some of this stuff? Can't we compile the copies and have a place on the boulevard make copies for us? Why do we need to spend at least $20,000 for a copier? And we don't get the copiers. We don't get to keep the machines. We get nothing. We just get a couple pieces of paper for $20,000. I'm also interested in why the Amagosa Creek mitigation services is $8,500. What is that all about? I mean, what do we have to mitigate? Finally, I want to speak on CC5. I think CC5, that is to...
Mr. Reeves, you're aware that CC5 has been approved already.
Okay. Well, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Okay. I want to say that this is, could be the beginning of something good for this city. Mayor Perez wants to make this the solar capital of the world, but we could also combine other things that we've done and make our city the recyclable capital of the world. We could recycle everything in this town and become the city that recycles in addition to solar energy, which is reusable energy. And I think pairing up with Kern County is a first step in that. It's also a first step for the city of Lancaster to consider at one point in our history whether we want to still remain part of Los Angeles County and would like to succeed and become part of Kern County because the natural boundaries are that we belong to Kern County, not Los Angeles County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Moving to our praise, approve CC2?
A second.
Let's vote. NV1, any speaker cards? We have two.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, City Council members. Tonight, I'm here to ask for your consideration and the continuance of the Building Incentive Stimulus Program through the end of fiscal year 2014, 2015. Staff reexamine the need for continuing the program after receiving a request from the Building Industry Association. The recovery of the building industry in Lancaster has been hampered by things like the federal sequestration and changes in the lending environment. For the same reasons I've given in the past, job creation, revenue generation, and blight elimination, there's still a need for this program. After a quick, as a quick review, the program provides a 25% discount of city-imposed development impact fees within existing tracts and defers the payment of city-imposed impact fees for commercial industrial development to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy or the certificate of completion. It also waives the requirement for landscaping in-track development in the rear and side yards, provided water-efficient landscaping is installed in the front yard. Currently, the development impact fees for a new single-family dwelling are $11,413 per house. The 25% discount is $2,853 per house. This program provides a direct and substantial way the city has at its disposal to immediately improve the feasibility of current development activities. This program would be in effect through June 30th, 2015, to help stimulate the local job market, eliminate blight, increase property values, and encourage developers to continue to build in the city of Lancaster. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions?
My understanding is this, our stimulus program has been adopted throughout Southern California, and it's highly successful.
I understand it's been used by other cities. I don't know how extensive it is. Maybe Marta from the BIA, who I know intends to speak, could address that.
Thank you.
And if I may, I think that's one example as to why we received the award to be the business-friendly city of doing things like this. And as our Vice Mayor was saying, other cities are taking this as an example for them to use, too. So it's very, very productive of what we're doing.
That's absolutely true. Thank you.
Mr. Neal, I would like to see this come back to us. I mean, I think we should go ahead and approve it, but I think it needs to be revamped in that we should be requiring houses, houses that are built to take advantage of this to be both energy efficient and more water efficient rather than the average house using an acre foot of water a year. Perhaps we should cut that in half. If they could cut that in half, they would then enjoy the benefits of this. If you could submit a program to us in the next 180 days for our review, I would appreciate that. Could you do that?
Absolutely. That's a terrific idea. Water is a crucial issue, and I'm sure we're going to find ways to make it work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have some speaker cards. Michael Reeves?
Mayor, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen, I don't have a problem with giving developers 25% off if they develop the property. What I do have a problem with is the landscaping's not required in the rear and side yards when not visible from the street. So who's going to do the landscaping? The buyer's going to do it after they buy it? Or what if we have a situation where we did before, where we have new houses that are abandoned? So now we have new houses that don't have yards and aren't developed, which are eyesores, even though they're not visible from the street. I think when you bring back the measure to discuss solar, you ought to bring back the measure that landscaping is required so that we have a complete house. If we're going to give you 25% off on the impact fees, we expect you to have a complete product with the solar and the yards done. Thank you.
Are these invisible eyesores?
Isn't that the definition of eyesores?
I would think currently with the way the state is in regards to water, I don't know if we would just want to prematurely do planning to the rear that it's not visible with the assumption at some point in time the house being sold. So I think that with the current, the way the current incentive is, I think is well-written. And your idea, Mayor, with maybe we can come up with some creative ideas to further incentivize with that retention of gray water. That's a great idea.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Now, you have to be for this. I am indeed. And it's marked as such. Marta Golden-Brown with the Building Industry Association. I am with the Los Angeles and Ventura Counties Chapter, and I am now the Government Affairs Director for the chapter. I am here in favor of this, and I echo what Robert says, so I won't belabor the moment. I did take note of your comment on the 180 days and coming back to revamp it with more energy and water efficiency. We will certainly work with Robert and try to help in tooling some of that language. And as you know, one of our largest members, KB Home, is producing those homes here in the city and has been working on these. But what I would say in the interim is that the other builders are, you know, playing catch-up. And so it may be something that we request that you phase in and that we work with the other builders. I will tell you that the, our chapter is working on a water summit for late April, and we were planning to invite Mr. De Prima in so that he could speak. We are having, you know, AVAC and some other folks come in and speak, and we'd like to have him come speak to the builders and address some of the things that he's doing here in the city of Lancaster. So that's 60 days from now, so 180 may be a little too short to have it implemented, but we certainly will work with you on the language.
We look forward to working with you.
Right.
But I think the building industry has to be clear on this. Our allotments cut 60%. We now have 40% of the water we used to have. We can either recognize the new reality and build around it, or we could ignore it to our detriment. Obviously, in Lancaster, we're not going to ignore it.
I absolutely understand it and agree with you. And we've been working very closely with the city and with AVAC and with LA County Water Works on trying to work with the allocations of the drought-tolerant landscaping and showing that water usage is actually less than the one acre foot that they require per home. And we have hard statistics utilizing the city data and KB Home data that's been built to the new drought-tolerant landscape. And I would also echo Councilman Mann's comments about the landscaping in the rear portion of the yard. You know, these families, they, we don't want to use more water if we don't need to right away. So I think that the drought that we're in currently and potentially may continue, although we are going to have an inundation of water here shortly. But, you know, it's a long-term situation that we all have to work together to resolve. We're absolutely a partner in that process.
Wonderful. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, one question. We were talking about saving water. Remember, a number of years ago, we created our ZeroScape, you know, guidance for new homes. Now, I'd like to ask Mr. Neal that if there was a track map that has been sitting around for 10 years because of the economic collapse, can we go back now and say, okay, yeah, you got a CUP, and you weren't under those, can we put them under that zero-scaping water-saving ordinance that we created? And don't you love questions like this without any preparation?
Sure, Allison's going to help me out here, but we're possible. We absolutely are changing the requirements so that people install water-efficient landscaping.
Right.
And in fact, part of the incentive program is there's no sod, no grass in the front yard. And when the rear yard is landscaped, it's limited to 10% of that area for grass.
Zero-scaping plan that we...
Right. We were, yes, sir.
Good. I mean, because, you know, some of those tracks have been sitting around. You know, I just wanted to add just one note that other people did, a little bit of history of what we did here as a council, is that we were like one of the first cities in the nation, you know, when the economic collapse happened, a lot of cities looked at the fees that were coming in and calculated their budgets and said, wait a minute, we're not going to have enough money to handle staff and everything, so we're going to raise fees. And we did the opposite. We said, we're going to lower fees. And in this valley, we were the only area that had homes being built. We had four projects from KB Home, and we were bringing in more fees than if we would have raised fees. And that's just the way it works. You know, if you stimulate it, you're going to make more money. You know, if you stimulate it, you're going to make more money. And, and that's, and that's why we continue the project. So it's great, great that we started it. And now, I think nationwide, I talked to the people up in the, the state BIA, and they'd like, they'd like all of California to do what we do. So it was, it worked out good.
You know, the reality is if people want grass in their yard, it's going to have to be gray water. There just isn't any way around it that I can see. Marta, we're going to be appointing a water, a commission to deal with the water issue. I don't know what we're going to call it, but you might start looking for who you want to have on that, because I want everybody at the table. Okay? Thank you.
We'll move to adopt resolution number 14-10.
Second.
Yes, sir. Moving on. NB2, Safe Routes to School Program. We have one speaker card. Brian Ludicake.
Thank you, Mayor Paris, and members of the City Council. The City of Lancaster in 2013 was successful in obtaining a grant through Los Angeles County Public Health for the preparation of a Safe Routes to School master plan for the city. And beginning last August, we've been working with our community partner, Antelope Valley Partners for Health, and our four local school districts to do this very exciting and worthwhile project. This evening, Melissa Varela from the Parks, Recreation, and Arts Department and I will be giving you an update on the status of that program, what we've learned from our community so far, and the things that we have accomplished so far as a part of it. Now, the program itself is quite ambitious. We are really setting out with a goal of including all 29 of our public schools within this Safe Routes to School master plan. Now, so far, we've conducted walk audits at 11 of, 11 of our schools, and five more are scheduled for that process in March. And Melissa, in a few moments, will go over what we do in that walk audit process. Now, as I mentioned, the funding for this comes through Los Angeles County Public Health, but that funding is funneled through them from the Centers for Disease Control. And you might wonder why that is the way that the funding comes. And the reason is because it's been recognized by health authorities within the United States that we are not doing a real good job in terms of exercise and health, either for adults or for our children. In 1985, this is the map that showed what the obesity trends were among adults in the United States. 25 years later, this is the map. And as you'll notice, the colors that existed on the map in 1985 are no longer there. We have become, unfortunately, a much more obese and out-of-shape nation. And we find that that's not only the case for adults, but it transfers to our children. And it's recognized that if we can look at a Safe Routes to School type of program, that there is the opportunity for school-aged children to incorporate exercise daily into their lives as a part of getting to and from school. Back in 1968, almost half of schoolchildren either walked or biked to school, but for a variety of reasons, nationally, that number had dropped to 13% by the year 2010. There is some good news for what we've found so far in our community. From the schools that we've done so far in the surveys, we actually have a higher percentage of children, at least in those schools, walking or biking than national, than the national average. It ranges from 13% to 34% of the total school trips. But students who do not walk or bike are usually driven in a family vehicle to school. And we find that children arriving at school can range up to 70% to 80% of the trips, depending on the school location. That has certainly effects from a health standpoint. It has effects, obviously, from a traffic and safety standpoint. And as you can see, nationally, only about 44% of school trips are by family car. The difference, we think, is busing. We think in a lot of areas of the country, there's still a significant amount of busing that occurs for children. In the, in the Antelope Valley, that has kind of ceased, for the most part, in the public school system. Now, we found that not only are schoolchildren healthier if they're able to walk, but a Danish study that was done in 2012 indicated that children who regularly walk or bike to school have the ability to concentrate at a rate of children that are about six months older. So it improves their ability to function in school once they get there. Not only do they have health effects. One other thing that we found in our community, and I don't know whether this is true in other locations, is that we have two to three times as many children walk or bike home from school as walk to school in the morning. So we think that's probably due to them being dropped off in the morning by working parents who cannot pick them up in the afternoon, and they have to go get home another way. What that says to us is there may be a need to look at the afternoon programs as much as the morning ones, which have been more of the focus and concentration. Nationally, we did take a look at what the Safe Routes to School organization has found as the barriers that parents have identified for why their children may not walk or bike to school. Distance to a school from a child's house is the primary reason that's listed. But traffic danger, certainly a major one, weather, crime danger, and in some cases, even school policy, are reasons that discourage that walking or biking. And the traffic danger issue is important. In our walk audits, that has been cited in every single school that we have been in so far, whether it was parents, administrators, school crossing guards, they have all cited their deep concern with traffic situations at the school. As one parent put it, "The most dangerous thing to schoolchildren is other parents and the way that they drive when they go to pick up kids." And they all recognize it in themselves, but that's a major thing that they're trying to control and work with. And they do have concern, and good concern, for that speed, or, or travel speed and the way driving occurs around schools. We all know from physics and from driver education that higher speeds make it difficult to stop in a short distance. If you are driving a vehicle at 20 miles an hour, you may be able to stop in about 100 feet. But if you are driving at 40 miles an hour, it will take you the length of a football field to stop. Not only is the stopping distance a concern, if you are a pedestrian and you are hit at 20 miles an hour, not a pleasant thing, you are going to be injured, but you are probably going to survive. If you are hit at the speed of 40 miles an hour by a moving vehicle, odds are you are going to die. 85% of those pedestrians die in those kinds of crashes. So obviously, speed, schoolchildren, the speed that they can get across the street is a concern. So we've looked, and you are seeing within our community different attempts to try to slow down traffic speeds, particularly in our schools. Curb extensions that force drivers to make slower turns. Crossing islands that give people a refuge place, so they only have to cross half a street at a time. And in some cases, neighborhood traffic controls, this happens to be what's called a neighborhood traffic circle. We do have one of those installed near the MAC facility that was recently built by the county. But these are ways to try and address some of those issues. And of course, all of our Safe Routes to School emphasizes what are known as the five Es of Safe Routes to School: education, encouragement, enforcement, engineering, and evaluation. You really need to have all of those working together to make that effective. Now, I'd like to introduce Melissa, who's going to talk to you about the process that we go through when we do a walk audit at a school.
Walk audits were conducted at several of our Lancaster schools through the Safe Routes to School grant. Parents, teachers, and even students were invited to learn about the different elements that either help or hinder safe walking or biking to school. Some of these elements are street lighting, sidewalk conditions, traffic volume, bicycle lanes, trash and debris, landscaping concerns, and even the presence of dogs. The group was then given the opportunity to provide input of what they felt was either impeding safe or, safe walking or biking to school. Once the group was well-informed of what to expect during the actual walk, they were given a route which they designated themselves, depending on each school, and they documented the different safety concerns, traffic issues, or lack of infrastructures that they saw during the walk. They suggested possible improvements that they felt were necessary. Once the walk was over, the group was then given the opportunity to map out what they documented through the walk and actually pinpoint on a map what they encountered to be concerns. Through the walk audit, the data collected was beneficial to us as we provide information for the Safe Routes to School master plan. All this, all through the walk audits, all of this, in the end, gives them more information on what Safe Routes to School is and what it actually consists of.
Thank you, Melissa. We've also worked on the education and encouragement part of this, the walking school buses, which the council is familiar with. These are ones that were conducted at West Wind and Lincoln. And we also did conduct, late last fall, an encouragement and education program, which we called the Family Fun Day. Students had the opportunity to come out, learn about bicycle safety, helmet safety, how to obey traffic laws, how to safely cross streets, and gave them a better opportunity to, to learn how to conduct themselves safely in their travel to and from school. And that was a very, very successful day, despite the fact that it was one of the few days we've had rain this year. But we had a pretty good turnout from our schools and our parents and our students. So that's a brief summary of what we've been working on. And as I said, it's an ongoing program, and we're very excited about the connections that we're making with our students, our teachers, our administrators. And we find a lot of enthusiasm from our parents and our school administrators about this program. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Although I was grateful to hear that children that are able to walk are healthier than those who don't. I think you meant children that walk are healthier than those who don't.
Oh, okay. I may have misstated that.
It was just too good to pass up. Okay, thank you. Although, the other thing, you know, just for a point of edification, the, those colors as to obesity don't apply to Lancaster. They don't have a color on those charts dark enough for the childhood obesity in Lancaster. We are over the top. So this program is really vital. Thank you.
You know, it would be curious, Mr. Mayor, is that when you looked at that chart, Oregon was different than any other state. What are they doing, what is Oregon doing differently? And it rains all the time there, so I mean, it's, yeah.
It was the lightest one.
It was, it was the only one that was light blue. The only state that was light blue.
That's because they got to swim to school.
All right, Michael Reeves. You can't be opposed to this, Michael.
Uh-oh.
Mayor, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen, I have a few things to say about the, I think it's a great program, and we should encourage it. But I see students walking in the bike lane at Sunnydale Elementary School between 15th Street West and 12th Street West on J8. They're walking in a bike lane because we do not have a sidewalk there. Now, I think that the property now belongs to AV Hospital. The city might consider speaking with AV Hospital and see if they could put a sidewalk between 15th Street West and 12th Street West on J8 for students to not have to walk practically in the street. Even though we have crossing guards all around that area, I'm telling you, that intersection is crazy. People walk across the street, even though there's street crossing guards around that school. And then you have the students walking on the bike lane coming to school. I thought it would, Brian brought up the part about the, helping the kids with the safety rules. You know, we had a student that was killed recently, bless his soul. I don't know the circumstances, the sheriff would know about it. But I thought maybe the schools or maybe the city needs to have some kind of program to inform the drivers in this city about adequate, when you see a school bus, a flashing school bus, or you just see a school bus, what do you do? So that we don't have a recurrence of a child getting killed. Finally, the traffic situation in this town is horrendous. I mean, you stay in a, at an intersection, waiting for the lights to change, undue amount of time. And with gasoline, the price it is, I think we need to have an audit that we can speed up some of the times that travel in this city, and people won't be so apt to go through yellow lights and hit pedestrians. It's just too much time consumed at the intersections in this city, waiting for the lights to change. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I address a couple of things that he said?
Yes.
At the AVA QMD meeting, we did vote to apply $100,000 to each one of the cities to synchronize all the lights. So there, hopefully, they will not be sitting around waiting for the lights to change, because we are going to give the city a grant to synchronize all the lights, Michael. So that'll help. So.
Thank you. NB3?
I'll move that we receive and file NB2.
There's no action necessary.
Okay. Beverly Claude? Do we have anything on NB3?
No.
Do you want to wave? We'll wave the report. Is the, okay. No actions necessary. CR1?
Can we call up Michael so I can answer his questions?
Michael Reeves.
Mayor, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for that information, Vice Mayor Crist, about the traffic signals. However, I have a question about some expenditures that the AVTA has recently made. $50,000 to hire a federal advocacy group to advocate for the AVTA. You know, don't we have United States congressmen and representatives in Washington? Do we need to have a special group to advocate for the AVTA at $50,000? You remember, we were going to have, we were going to hire, excuse me, we were going to buy 12 diesel buses, and then we changed our mind, and now we want to buy 12 electric buses. And we want the federal advocacy group, which we're going to pay $50,000 to, to go see if the feds will change the rules so we can buy electric buses. I don't think that's a very good way to spend taxpayer money. And I thought the deal was that we were going to purchase two electric buses, try them out, and then purchase more electric buses later. Thank you.
Mr. Crist.
Our goal in Lancaster is jobs. Jobs, jobs, jobs. So what we're trying to do is to make a, a business work, but we're trying to get our fair share. In order to get our fair share of all the different grants and funding, we need to compete with the rest of the United States. To compete with the rest of the United States, the rest of the United States has congressmen, and they're all competing. So we have to have someone back in Washington, DC that will actually have our voice for us. So we did send some individuals back. We sent them back to Washington, DC. They did take a look at this. We did hire a firm. It was not the most expensive firm that was back there. They were over $100,000 to do it, but this has, we have some history with this group that we did hire. But we should be getting far more grants. And to answer your question in regards to the, the clean diesel buses, we decided as a group from the AVTA that we were going to go electric buses. Electric buses. Electric buses are cheaper to run, it's more easy to, um, fund in the latter years because they can budget around it. Uh, we don't have to look at, uh, diesel. Diesel right now, that's going between, uh, three dollars and fifty cents and four and a quarter. We have to budget at five dollars, uh, for that. So the budget concerns are a, uh, huge difference, and we don't have to do that with diesel. So when you look at it as a, a big picture, the big picture is, we're getting people, uh, jobs, uh, we're supporting the local community, and we're going to help the environment doing it. So it's a win-win-win in AVTA's eyes.
Yes, I, I, I agree with you, Vice Mayor, and I, I think you said it very well in all the three areas that are very important to us as Antelope Valley. And we totally, um, without a doubt, agree that we need, um, to develop jobs, and this is a great opportunity to do so, and more importantly, we also care about our environment. Um, as our Vice Mayor said, it definitely is a win-win-win. Um, sometimes, uh, we, uh, tend to think outside the box, and that's what makes our city successful, and that's what we're doing, and, um, we will make sure that it happens, and we will be continuously moving forward so that we can see it happening.
We're good? Thank you. Moving on, uh, Housing Authority, no action required, Financing Authority, no action, Power Authority, no action, Successor Agency, no action. City Manager?
Um, three announcements. Number one, we had the, uh, um, opening event of the Corporate Challenges, uh, last weekend. There was, uh, over two hundred runners in a 5K. It was pretty inspiring, I thank Beverly Claude and her staff for the hard work they did putting it on as the first event, and it was so inspiring, it almost made me wanna run. I didn't quite get there. Number two, while it doesn't, uh, people may not be that excited about it, they should be. We just received word from the Department of Finance that our property management plan for the former redevelopment agency, now the successor agency oversight board, was approved this week by the Department of Finance. That probably puts us in the top ten percent of, um, former agencies that have been approved, and when you consider that there's gotta be, there can't be any agency that has more properties than we do, that's a real testament to Barbara Boswell, Pam Statzman, her staff, and our oversight board, which is made up of local citizens, which oversight, they've worked really hard to get to this point. What it means in real terms is, we can now keep those properties for government purposes that are for government purposes, and we have the ability now to market and sell the properties for resale, proceeds going to the state, but we can then now put these on the market for beneficial uses of Lancaster. So it's a very big deal, and, um, it's sort of the last hurdle, if you will, in the dissolution. Now we're managing enforceable obligations. Lastly, uh, Mayor Paris and, um, Councilwoman Johnson were at the last Tapestry Commission, and it was the Weaver's event, and it was, uh, one of the best meetings I've been to. We had the Buffalo Soldiers, we had to talk about the Tuskegee, Tuskegee Airmen, and for those folks that haven't gone to the Tapestry Commission Weaver's meetings, they're really tremendous, they're very inspiring. So we have a short video to show folks about, um, a couple of the, um, a little bit of that meeting. Shall we play that?
Antelope Valley has so many different types of human beings with one goal, and that's equality of life. I'd like to call to the podium, uh, Mr. Emmett Morale and the Buffalo Soldiers for your presentation.
Who were the Buffalo Soldiers? They were former slaves and also free men, just like in the Civil War. During the Civil War, a lot of men who were free decided to help bring the independence about and enlisted. So they were slaves as well as free men. In the ranks of black soldiers that served, many soldiers did serve and backed them in the time of George Washington in the cause of independence. They also served with Andrew Jackson in New Orleans in eighteen fifteen and the British invaders, but the real employment came during the Civil War. There were over a hundred and eighty thousand black soldiers that served, uh, during the Civil War, but their main job, the Buffalo Soldiers were, to support the westward, westward expansion of the United States. The name came from the Native American Indian. That's actually a name of honor that they gave us, and to this very day, we carry it. Compared to our life, it was a very difficult life. It was not easy. Buffalo Soldier was paid thirteen dollars a month to do what they did. How many here can survive on thirteen dollars a day?
Hello, my name is Renee Landon-Clint, and I am glad that you had this event today. Our real core stands for heritage, culture, youth, and community. Thank you.
That one magic day, when Eleanor Roosevelt said, "Why aren't those boys in combat? They've met every requirement that's necessary for them to be in the battlefield fighting on behalf of the country that they call home." So Eleanor Roosevelt went down to Tuskegee, and we have that famous flight where the First Lady of the United States got in the back of a Skierman with a, with a young Tuskegee cadet and flew. And of course, everybody was out there, and everybody knew on the field that day that the game had changed. So at that point, they were formed into two fighter groups, the Ninety-Ninth and the Three Thirty-Second, and they were sent over to North Africa in April nineteen forty-three.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the City Council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out clearly and print as, clearly as possible so that if the City Council, City Manager, and City Staff need to get in touch with you, they will have your information. As much as we appreciate a request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have thirty seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law does prohibit the City Council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Willie Green?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I say, Council. Um, I live down on, uh, Fern at Silver Winds, uh, Senior Apartments. Uh, my concern today is, after making inquiries, and maybe, maybe I inquired the wrong places, but, um, I, I have concern about, uh, an evacuation route should the city have a disaster. Um, I'm also concerned about a, an emergency shelter. Now, I'm concerned about this because in different type situations, seniors get frustrated. If it's not laid out for them, it becomes a problem. And if you have a disaster, uh, confusion presents a more difficult problem. And if we know what the plan is, where to go, it makes it a lot simpler. And, um, I wanted to bring to your attention.
That is a great idea. I mean, we, we really should figure out a way to, to make certain seniors do know where we want, want them to go. Uh, as to the, the evacuation routes, that's determined when it happens because they shut down, you know? Primarily what we're worried about is an earthquake, and so we really don't know what roads we have available until after the earthquake's over. But we do have evacuation plans in place and, and emergency, emergency shelters in place, but you're right, we're gonna have a lot of seniors staying at home because they're gonna be confused as to what to do. We'll work on that, and one, I'm sorry. One thing I might say, I think it is a great idea. We can go to the senior center locations because we've done a lot of work on that. We can talk about where those shelters are, provide the plans, which are online and hard copy. Um, the first thing of emergency preparedness, as you well know, the first thing is to be prepared yourself in your home, and then it goes on from there, but I think it's a great opportunity, and we'll take it to the senior center and on the road.
Okay, I, um, I don't know what time is up, but, um...
That's okay. Don't worry about, don't worry about the time.
I have formed a, um, a team, uh, to assist, uh, should a disaster, uh, happen if we have an earthquake. Um, one of the difficulties is, um, finding where emergency supplies are, uh, that's available at this time. I know that there, uh, uh, like Wincor has, um, some food items that, uh, last up to forty years. Uh, but if you know somewhere, yeah, it's, um, the type food that the astronauts use...
Forty years?
Forty.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
That's a good idea, too. We can give, show where you can get discount supplies and backpacks for very nominal cost, and we can provide that information as well, too, at the senior centers that have enough for three, five, seven days.
Right.
And it's a very nominal cost.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Michael Reeves, now, why aren't you constructive like that?
Well, this is, this is really good because I was gonna talk about the senior center. Um, the other day, I was having lunch at the senior center, and one of the seniors was telling me about a modern senior center in Henderson, Nevada. It feeds the seniors seven days a week. It has a, uh, like a coffee shop, it has a store where you can purchase food and take it home for the weekend if you don't wanna come back to the center. I think the city of Lancaster needs to get more involved with the seniors of this community. I don't know if you need to create a department or what, but you need to get involved. Right now, I understand there's, this food program we have over here is in flux, and it's being managed by the YWCA, and, and they discharged some, uh, county employees that were in charge of the center. It's just in flux. We need to get together and help the seniors, have a bureau, have a person in City Hall that deals with the, the seniors. I think we're one of the few cities around that doesn't contribute to the, the senior program. We need to step up on the senior program and help the people in this community. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reeves, you are aware that the senior center is a county facility, and it's run by Norm Hickling up here, and that if you really wanna make some improvements, he's the person to talk to. We, our hands are tied, there's nothing we can do. Thank you. David Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. It was a joy today to join you at the courthouse. I don't wanna get ahead of the stories in the paper, but, uh, it was a wonderful moment where the city's made up, and, uh, I, I, I just enjoyed being there. Thanks for letting me, uh, enjoy that with you. I wanna talk about the newspaper, too. Yesterday, a letter was printed that I wrote, but they added the name of Edward Snowden into the article, and I wasn't talking about Edward Snowden, so I want everybody to know that I wouldn't say such a stupid thing about Snowden. Um, Mr. Mayor, I've been thinking about the water. I enjoyed your talk at the, uh, State of the City address when you asked how many people have lawns and how many will have them next year. And this has gone on a while. Uh, I've talked to so many people through the years about water and their lawns, and, you know, the city gives tickets, pretty hefty tickets for having brown lawns, and I'd like to see some sort of two-year moratorium to where we get all these other things we're doing with the water worked out so that people aren't gonna get ticketed for having brown lawns till we figure out how to get them out of there. Um, nothing, you know, says that we don't care about a drought, like giving a ticket, and nothing will say that we're serious about it and get the word out to put this moratorium in place so people don't get fined. I'm in the same position. I don't know what to do with that grass, I have to rip it out over time. That's what my friend Gary Burgess did, with his cobblestones and his walk, he did it a little bit at a time. But it's gonna be a big deal with the water, and, uh, I appreciate, uh, any relief people can have, so we have a cohesive message of what our, our, our plan as a city is. And, uh, I love the, um, Safe Walking to School, uh, program, it's gonna help a lot to get kids exercise, but I was sitting there thinking about my kids, and if they saw the presentation to fight obesity, they'd probably tell me, "Hey, I'm not overweight, do I have to walk to school?" So, that's it. Thank you for today, thank you for everything we do, and, uh, it's fun to be here. I like the rope, it makes you feel more inaccessible. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Paul. Uh, okay. Moving on. Any comments from the council before we recess to close session?
Yes, if I may, Mayor, thank you. Just add a little more about what our City Manager was saying, uh, Mr. Bazigan, uh, in regards to the, um, Tapestry meeting that was there. Our, um, Mayor and I were so honored to be able to witness, for us to be able to acknowledge the African, African-American veterans that were there that day, and they received a standing ovation. That was just amazing to be able to witness that, uh, well deserved. And, um, for myself, it was really nice to be able to hear the Buffalo Soldiers, their stories, very educational, very, um, very inspiring. Um, so thank you for bringing that up, that was, that was very nice. Um, and in regards to, um, the Lancaster Corporate Challenge, I know we didn't discuss it, but I know as, as a community, we're looking forward to it, and I think this is a great way and opportunity for us to also promote good health. We're discussing the children, but also us adults need to get up and walk a little bit here and there, and this is a great opportunity for us to take with the Lancaster, um, uh, Corporate Challenge that we're going to be having, so I'm looking forward to the outcome with that and who's gonna win.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going into closed session, uh, regarding conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, 6.9. Somebody really passed an ordinance saying I had to read these numbers, didn't they?
You can reference the numbers on the agenda, items numbered one through eleven, if you would prefer.
I would much rather prefer that.
Item number one through eleven on the agenda under closed session.
So that's what we're gonna be doing, and we'll be back. Okay, City Attorney? Your announcement?
Yes, in closed session, uh, the council discussed two items of potential litigation pursuant to item one under the closed session agenda, as well as item number eleven on the closed session agenda. No reportable action.
Thank you. Uh, the Housing Authority meeting is adjourned till Tuesday, March eleventh, two thousand fourteen, at five, and the City Council meeting is adjourned, and Mary, again, of Gary Burgess, until Tuesday, March eleventh, two thousand fourteen, at five. Meeting's adjourned.
In that, but I, ever, never for this.
I do believe, though, in leaving the door open, I do believe in research, so I do also, uh, Mayor, believe that it's something that could be done possibly later on with research. However, I also am very pro entrepreneur.
However, I also am very pro entrepreneur and standing by business owners and making sure that it doesn't affect them in any way, whatever the outcome may be. So I am for...
Thank you.
It doesn't have to be, it can be...
You're over your time, okay? But thank you. I told you, you didn't have the votes.
No, I would chime in with Vice Mayor Chris, too. You know, I mean, if this is something that government does is one thing. Government can decide what they want to do for themselves, but we butter nose into private business enough.
I'm enjoying it. I'm not going to cut it off.
We don't need to tell business what to do. They can hire and fire whoever they want.
This item is not agendized for action. We can't come to consensus tonight under the Brown Act, so it would have to come back at a later date.
We're having a discussion. We're not having a vote.
I won't say nothing.
Thank you.
A year after this has been in play, I'd like a report back as to whether or not it's working, whether or not it's caused any problems, whether or not it's increased any expense. I don't think we should ever be afraid of looking at what the results of something that is happening out there is. I mean, I think you're probably right. I just don't think we should make decisions without having all the information in front of us. Okay, I think that concludes the speaker cards. We're going to go into an executive session in a moment. Before we do, we will be adjourned the meeting this evening in memory of Lancaster resident Gary Burgess. Gary Burgess was a strong proponent for the betterment of Lancaster, which began with his fight to save his own neighborhood. This grew into how Lancaster deals with crime, and he was influential in the city's decision to reinstate its Neighborhood Watch program and hiring of a crime prevention officer. Gary's commitment led him to become a volunteer at the Lancaster Sheriff's Station, something he urged everyone to consider. He had a healthy impatience with the system and his focus on the neighborhood and his determination to improve it is truly worthy of recognition. His motivation was unselfish. He only cared about the betterment of the community and always wanted to be a part of the solution. In 2010, he and his wife together received the green light on three projects under the Lancaster Unite Program. The projects included painting house numbers on curbs for public safety, hosting a neighborhood block party to strengthen relationships among neighbors, and applying signs to trash containers to remind drivers to drive safely in the Paiute neighborhood. He is survived by his wife Shirley and their five children, and he will be truly missed. Gary truly was a Lancaster hero in so many ways. He stood up by himself, unarmed, confronted gang members in his neighborhood, and rallied the community. I'm not sure that the war on gangs would have been as successful if we hadn't had him as an example. I am really saddened to hear that he has passed. And I think, and you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I did. Gary and I were, my first campaign, Gary extended, reached out, had never known the gentleman before. And all I can say about Gary is, is we have more people like him as model citizens. We've already heard just to test tonight of some of the things that he's done, and it just, he'll be missed.
He was a great individual at the sheriff's station. He rallied the troops at the sheriff's station, the volunteers over there. He did a newsletter. He did a lot for this community. And I don't think everyone always agreed with Gary, but at least he did it very respectfully, and he's a great, great man, and he will be missed.
That's for sure.
Thank you. Okay, well, now recess to closed session for the purpose of ongoing litigation as outlined
item number 11, Antelope Valley groundwater cases, as noted on the agenda, as well as
in the agenda.
For each of the items listed on the agenda.
Okay.
And, Michael, while we're in there, we'll talk about these attorney fees.
three items of anticipated litigation. No reportable action.
Thank you very much. We are now adjourned until...
That's mine.
You took my script?
Kitty rehearsed first.
What? Oh, Kitty's does first. Okay.
The housing authority meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, February 25, 2014, at 5:00 PM.
The city council meeting is adjourned in memory of Gary Burgess until Tuesday, February 25, 2014, at 5:00 PM. Carol, I'm coming home.